Greetings, ladies and gentlemen. You are welcome to GST one one two, logic, philosophy and human existence. There are different aspects of this course. And each of these aspects will be taken in study sessions. So we are beginning now with study session one. And what we are going to be doing today is introduction to logic. My name is Patrick Odoo-Meijer. Now, logic is a common word we use in our daily conversations. Sometimes, when two people are involved in an argument, you may hear one accuse the other of speaking logic. What does that suggest to you? It is an indirect way of saying that the person is claiming to be wise. On other occasions, when someone makes a presentation or statement, those listening to him or her may claim that the person is logical. Here, the person is suggesting that what that person has just said makes sense. In other cases, you may consider what people said as being illogical, meaningless. It doesn't make sense. This suggests that the idea of logic implies making statements that are meaningful and sensible. It means that for whatever we say, our rights to make sense or to convey meaning, it must be logical. The remarks we have made so far point to the importance of logic in human society. Now, in this study session, it is expected that we are able to give the meaning of logic, to describe the relationship between logic and language, to identify and explain the key periods in the history of logic, to explain the three laws of thought and possibly their objections, and then list at least five ways logic is significant to societal life. Now, we begin with the meaning of logic. Now, what is logic? That should be the first question in the answer. Now, you see, logic, like many other concepts we have, is not easy to define. Why is it not easy to be defined? It is not easy to define because different scholars, different philosophers have different views on the scope and the content of the concept. One thing you need to know about philosophy is that when it comes to knowledge, knowledge is often considered as being perspectiva. What we mean by that is different people will look at different things from their own different angles. The description you give to one thing may be different from what another person you give to it because what you may see in it may not be the same thing the other person may see in it. However, when it comes to the concept of logic, the best way to begin is looking at the etymology of the word. Now, when we look at, talk about the etymology of the word, we are referring to the roots of that word, where that word comes from. When we are able to go to the root of that word, we are able to understand the meaning that was given to that word from the very outset and then we can even trace the different changes that have come to the understanding with the understanding of that particular concept. So, when it comes to the word logic, logic is etymologically derived from the Greek word logos, meaning speech, as well as thought or judgment. Greek word logos, meaning speech, as well as thought or judgment. Now, this etymological understanding of logic suggests that logic shares some relationship with language. This linkage becomes manifest in the logician's concern with statements used in argumentation. Logic is the study of the methods and principles used to distinguish correct reasoning from incorrect reasoning. When we are doing logic, we are talking about the study of the principles and criteria of valid reasoning. It involves the study of the methods and principles used in distinguishing correct reasoning from incorrectly reasoning. Logic investigates and clarifies or classifies the structure of statements and arguments, both through the study of formal systems of inference and through the study of arguments in natural language. So it could be said that logic is with the science of correct reasoning. Now, what is the history of logic? Now, if you want to trace the history of logic, we understand that as a discipline, logic has always been part of humankind. For every meaningful statement we make, for every statement we make that makes sense, it is because we have applied the laws of logic the correct way that the statement is making sense. But when it comes to looking at logic as a formal and systematic discipline, we can say that logic began with Aristotle, who lived between two, three hundred and eighty-four and three hundred and twenty-two B.C. Aristotle is generally considered as the father of logic. Now, the history of logic is divided into three major periods, namely the ancient or classical period, the Roman or medieval period, and then the modern and contemporary periods. Three periods in the history of logic, in the history of the development of logic. The first period is the ancient or classical period. The second period is the Roman or medieval period, and then the third period is the modern and contemporary period. Now, I'm going to look at each of these periods and see what contributions were made as far as logic is concerned. Now, we'll begin with the ancient or classical periods. Now, this period in the history of logic features the contributions of Aristotelian, the Megarian and the Stoic schools of logic. The school we call the Aristotelian school, the other one we call the Megarian school, and then the third one we call the Stoic schools of logic. Those are the different schools of logic that contributed to the development of logic in the ancient or classical period. Now, as we have already established, the ancient history of logic is associated with the contribution of Aristotle in his collection of works entitled the Organon. Now, when you want to look at the logical thoughts of Aristotle, the logical thoughts of Aristotle are contained in a collection of works that is called the Organon. So if you are asked, what particular term can you use to refer to the collection of logical thoughts of Aristotle? The answer is the Organon. Now, Aristotle's major contribution to logic is what is called syllogism, syllogism. Now, according to Aristotle, a syllogism is an argument in which certain things being laid down, something other than this necessarily comes about through them. Much later, I'm going to look at what syllogism is. Because generally, when it comes to logic, when we talk about syllogism, we are referring to this, an argument that has three propositions. Propositions in logic are referred to as formal statements. Three propositions, in which the first two are referred to as the premises, and then the third referred to as the conclusion. But if you are looking at the contribution of Aristotle to logic, it is the syllogism. And the syllogism of Aristotle is composed of the following sentences. Every, every man is white, no man is white, some men are white, and some men are white. Now, when when you look at the above sentence, the then, the fourth one is, some men are not white. When you look at the four different sentences, it is possible to identify four different types of statements, four different types of propositions, formal statements. And those four different types of formal statements are summarized in an acronym known as A E I O. A E I O. Each of these acronyms, each of the letters that make up this acronym means something. Now, the letter A refers to universal affirmative. The second one, the letter E, refers to universal negative. Then, the third letter I refers to particular affirmative. And the fourth letter O refers to particular negative. I take that again. The acronym is A E I O. A is universal affirmative, E universal negative, I particular affirmative, and O particular negative. When we say a particular proposition is, or formal statement is universal affirmative, we discover that it is a positive statement that is general. Then, the one that is universal negative is a negative statement that is general. Now, the one that is particular affirmative is a positive statement that is not general. Then, the one that is particular negative is a negative statement that is not general. The second school that contributed to the development of logic in the ancient or classical period is the Megarian school. We'll talk about the Megarian school. The Megarian school is represented by the following philosophers, Geodorus and Philo. Now, when it comes to the contribution they made to the development of logic, we discover that they were the first in the history of logic to inquire into the meaning of if-then propositions. If-then formal statements, if-then statement, that is, if I am a boy, then I will have a deep voice. If I am a boy, then I will have a male sex organ. They were the first to inquire into the meaning of such propositions. Now, Geodorus holds that an implication is true if and only if it is not possible for it to have a true antecedent and a full consequent. In other words, for any conditional statement, that kind of statement is a conditional statement. For any conditional statement to be true, let it be that it is not the case that the antecedent, that is, the first statement is true and the consequent, which is the second one, is false. Now, in this type of statement, you discover that there are two different statements that have been joined by conjunction. No, the, the, sorry, a connective, the connective. Later, I'm going to look at connectives and then you understand more what we are trying to say here. So for Philo, there are three conditions under which an implication, that is, a conditional statement, is true. Namely, if its antecedent and consequent are both true, if both of them are false, and if its antecedent is false and its consequent true. We move now to the third school that contributed to the development of logic in the ancient or classical period, the Stoics. Now, when you look at the contribution of the Stoics, you discover that in contrast to Aristotle's logic, which is the logic of terms, Stoic logic is the logic of propositions. The Stoics accepted the principle that every proposition is either true or false. In other words, the Stoics held on to what we call the true valued logic. A true valued logic is a logic that holds that every statement you make is either true or false. It can never be true, both, uh, both statements, uh, a statement cannot be both true and, and false at the same time. It is either it is true or it is false. So for every statement you make in a true valued logic system, for every statement you make, it is either true or false. Now, the Stoics divided propositions into two types, the simple propositions and the non-simple propositions. Simple propositions do not result from a combination of any other proposition. In other words, simple propositions are known as atomic propositions. Atomic in the sense that they, they carry only one unit of meaning. But when it comes to non-simple propositions, you discover that there is a combination of two different simple statements. And this is achieved using a connective. A connective is more like a word that joins two different statements. For instance, if you have two different statements like, I am a boy and, uh, for, uh, if you have a state, let's use this example, John is a boy and Joy is a girl. These are two different statements. You can use a connective to join the two statements. You can say, John is a boy and Joy is a girl. The and you have used to join the two different statements is what is called the connective. So it was the Stoics that delved into that aspect of logic. So the Stoics included in the extension of non-simple proposition connectives such as implication, conjunction, exclusive, disjunction. We are going to admit all of these connectives as the lecture progresses. The next stage in the development of logic is what we call the Roman or medieval logic. Now, in addition to commenting and amplifying the logic of Aristotle, medieval logic added original findings of its own. It developed theories of fallacies and of grammar bordering on semantics and the systematization of the syntax of the Latin language. The major contribution of the Roman or medieval logic to the development of logic is the theory of fallacies. They contributed the theories of fallacies and the different meanings they can give to whatever statement that people make. Now, when we come to the modern period, modern and contemporary period. This particular period ushered in the study of modern logic, which has suffered a decline because of its association with traditional metaphysics and its inability to justify the method of injunction. Now, before the modern and contemporary period, it was as if everything about logic stopped. Nothing was said again about logic. It was as if with Aristotle, everything about logic had been done. However, with the modern and contemporary period, there was this kind of renaissance in the development of logic. So the renaissance, which has to do with the repair of knowledge, afforded the breaking of new grounds in logic, leading to what is considered today as symbolic or modern logic, through the emergence of the British mathematicians, George Bohr and Augustus de Môte. Other development came through the German mathematician Gottlob Frech, and again, the Trancher and Alfred Not Whitehead. It is from symbolic logic that these orders become symbols of propositions and operators and connectives become part of logic. Now, symbolic logic just has to do with the use of symbols instead of ordinary words to represent the statements that we make. So you can use a particular symbol to represent a statement that we make. Now, those are the different contributions made by the different periods to the development of logic. Remember, we said there are three major periods in the development of logic. The first period is the ancient or classical period, which features the contributions of the Aristotelian, the Megarian and the Stoic schools, who made their different contributions to the development of logic. Then, the, the Roman or medieval logic, which came up with the theories of fallacies and the different interpretation and meanings we give to the different statements that we make. And then, the modern and contemporary period, where we have the emergence of what we call symbolic logic, where symbols are used to represent whatever statements that we make. Now, we are going into another theme, what we call the laws of thought. Now, in logic, there are certain laws that we must have to align our thinking with. If we align our thinking with those laws, our thinking will make sense. But if we do not align our thinking with those laws, there will be a problem with the way we think. And that is why we need to take that and look at those laws of thought. Now, the traditional philosophical enterprise tries logic out into two basic laws, labeled as the laws of thought. Scholars who have denied logic as the science of the laws of thought are very often argued and agreed, agreed that there exists fundamental laws of thought that thinking has to abide by if it is to be considered as correct or sound or valid. It is important that we look at these three laws that have been identified right from the time of Aristotle, who is, who we have said is the inventor of logic as systematic discipline. We have called him the father of logic. Now, these are the three laws. The first law is the principle of identity or the law of identity. The second law is the law of contradiction or the principle of non-contradiction. And then, the third law is the law of excluded middle or the principle of excluded middle. Three laws of thought. The first one is the law of identity or the principle of identity. The second one is the law of contradiction or the principle of non-contradiction, as it may be. And then, the third one is the law of excluded middle or the principle of excluded middle. Now, what do these laws mean? We're going to look at each of them. The first one is the law of identity. The law of identity is also known as the principle of identity, as we've already seen. This law states that if a statement is true, then it is true. That is, if a statement is A, it can only consistently remain A. That is, A is A and not any other thing. In other words, if anything is a cow, it means a cow. That is, if it, if it's a cow, then a cow. Explicitly, this law requires that in any one particular context, a term should not have different meanings in its occurrence. You cannot use A within the same context to mean this, and then within that same context, you still use A to mean something different. It must retain the same meaning, that is what this law is saying. So in the law of identity, it is easy to see that everything is the same as it is. Or a statement cannot not remain the same and change its truth value. Or A is A, simply stated, the first of the fundamental laws of thought is considered by many as a totality. If any statement is true, then it is true. In the law of identity, then, if a statement such as the sun is touching is true, then it is true. That is what the law says, you don't change it. The second law is the law of contradiction or the principle of non-contradition. According to this law, nothing can both exist and not exist at the same time and in the same respect. Or no statement is both true and false. That is what this particular law is saying. The law states, I repeat, nothing can both exist and not exist at the same time and in the same respect. Or no statement is both true and false. This implies that a thing cannot be and not be at the same time, or nothing can be and not be at the same time. I cannot be Mr. Patrick and not be Mr. Patrick at the same time. That is what this law is saying. We cannot say, this is O D L, and at the same time, we'll say, this is not O D L. This is what this law is saying. That is, if you say, A is not A. So the law of contradiction states that a statement, A, is the same thing as itself, and it is different from everything else. When you apply this to reality, you discover that the law of identity says that everything is itself and not something else. I cannot be Patrick and not be Patrick at the same time. So the law of contradiction, then, a statement such as the sun is touching cannot be both true and false in the same sense. It's not possible. That is what the law of contradiction is saying. Now, the third law is the law of excluded middle. The law of excluded middle also known as the principle of excluded middle states that something either exists or does not exist, or every statement is either true or false. That is, a thing is either A or not A. In other words, a statement is either true or false. A thing exists or does not exist. There is no middle point. In other words, in ordinary uses, this law requires that we give to a thing either some particular attribute or its opposite. There is no middle status at all. In short, everything must be or not be. Well, the law of excluded middle, a statement such as the sun is touching is either true or false. There is no other alternative. Now, those are the three laws of thought. As usual, in philosophy, there is nothing that goes uncriticized. Now, these three laws of thought have faced some objections. People have attacked these laws, have criticized these laws of thought. So let us look at the objections to the three laws of thought. The first one is objection to the law of identity. The first principle, the principle of identity, has been criticized based on the fact that things change or are in motion. Like a Plato, as we said, the only thing that is permanent in life is change. So you cannot just say that a thing will remain like that without changing. So the fact that change is a permanent thing in life, it is the weakness of the principle of identity to say that a thing will always be what it is and never change again. Now, for instance, if you look at a statement, Nigeria, we'll look at a statement like Nigeria has twelve states. You discover that there was a time, there was a time in the history of Nigeria that Nigeria had only twelve states. But that same truth at that time cannot hold what amounts that Nigeria has thirty-six states. So, because of change, that truth has shifted from Nigeria having twelve states now to Nigeria having thirty-six states and a federal capital. The same thing, we could talk about this at Nasser State University. So, Nasser State University, Kefi, at present located, it was formerly located in former School of Cultural Studies, Kefi. And all of them were in Benja Plateau when Nigeria was made up of twelve states. Look at, uh, Nasser State University and Lafayette, which is the capital of Nasser State. Both of them were in the Benja Plateau. But today, the things have changed. They have become on their own. So, statements or propositions whose truth values change with time are considered as electrical statements. They are incomplete formulations of propositions that have not changed, and it is a proposition with which logic is sweet. So in other words, what we're trying to say by criticizing the law of identity is the fact that things actually change. What was true yesterday may not be true today. And what is true today, tomorrow may actually change. That is one objection to the law of identity. Now, the second law of identity, which is the principle of contradiction or non-contradiction, as it may be, is backed by followers of Hegel. The general semantics and adherence to their theology on the front that there exists a multiple of contradictions in the narrative of Hegel, the domination of the worker from his level, and so for them, there are instances of conflicting forces at play in the war, as accepted as just. In other words, what the point we're trying to make here regarding this situation is, if we look at life, there are situations where there may be contradictions. Contradictions may work hand in hand. For instance, if I have, if I have I problems, I may be and maybe I look at a particular substance which is white, because of the optical defects I have, that particular thing that is white can appear to me as red because of the problems I have with my own eyes. But we're still talking about the same thing. Or if you look at something with your naked eyes, and then decide to look at that same particular thing with glasses that are maybe colored. Maybe let's say you are wearing yellow-colored glasses to look at a particular object that you use your naked eyes to look at. Certainly, the color of the glasses will be different from, the color of the glasses will affect whatever result you have from your observation when you compare that result with the one you have when you use your naked eyes. So in other words, what we're trying to say is there are instances where contradictions can work hand in hand. That is objection to the second law of thought. Now, the third law of thought, which is the law of excluded middle, is also objected to. Why? Because it sticks to what we call two-valued logic. Two-valued logic means the logic that every statement you make is either true or false. Now, scholars have discovered that there is a possibility of what we call three-valued logic. You cannot say there is no middle point. For instance, yeah, Aristotle himself talked about virtual lies in the middle. Talk of the two extremes and then the middle. So in other words, with the discovery of logicians, that there is a possibility of three-valued logic, it is already an objection to the position held by the top bar of thought that there is no middle point. Now, those are the three laws of thoughts and their objections. We're going to move to the next thing, which is the value of studying logic. Why do we have to study logic? There are many reasons why we have to study logic. Number one, logic helps to investigate and systematically develop principles for differentiating the two straight and booket reasoning. When we study logic, we're able to differentiate valid reasoning from invalid reasoning. That's what I'm trying to say. Logic enables clear expression of ideas and development of a good and efficient communication skill. Your skills will be enhanced, as individuals will be able to present ideas through well-constructed systematic and reasonable argument. So if you study logic, you are built with the skills to be able to construct arguments that are systematic and very, very reasonable. That's what I'm saying. The third one is logic enables clear thought through rigorous demand for truthfulness. When we do logic, you are able to arrive at the truth. When we study logic too, it allows you to see things realistically. Logic enables one to view argument critically and intelligently. The individuals learn to view and defend their own view, to appreciate competing positions, and to indicate possibly why they consider their own view preferable to other alternatives. Logic protects one from undue and deliberate influence, influence on belief and actions. When you are, when you study logic, it will help you to be very, very conscious of your beliefs and then actions, because you are certainly going to question certain beliefs and question certain actions that you feel are not in line with correct reasoning. And the use of logic enables concentration of all valuable options for opinion and action, and decreases the persuasive power of popular opinion. So when you are logical in your thinking, when you study logic, you are able to examine and assess whatever opinion or whatever action you are about to perform. Now, that is it about this study session. So we can say that in this study session, we have established that logic is the study of the principles and criteria of valid reasoning. Language is very important in logic and plays many functions in logic. Informative function, directly evaluated, motive, creative, harmonious, a multi-linguistic function. Uh, talk about the history of logic is divided into three major periods. Ancient or classical period, Roman, medieval period, and then the modern and contemporary period. Now, there are three laws of thought. The law of identity, law of contradiction, and law of excluded middle. And each of these laws has its own objections. Thank you very much for